Oncologists at Stanford Medical Center called the tumor an end-of-life tumor. I am in my early 40s and I have an end-of-life tumor that typically happens to people in their late 80s and upward. The tumors grow rapidly and within a few weeks to a few months, the person transitions to another plane of existence. An oncologist in Ucaya recommended, per Stanford Medical Center, a do-stent formula of chemotherapy and radiation therapy for cure. Chemotherapy consists of Adriamycin, Cytotoxin, and Taxol. Anybody want to guess what Taxol is made from?
Tan oak.
Tan oak. There you go. There's a little irony there. So, let's see. The same week I found the tumor, the Willis News printed chemical trespass maps regarding the Remco issue. I had not lived in one of those neighborhoods. The surgery was scheduled immediately, phoning my children who were on vacation in Hawaii with their dad. They were gone for three weeks and I didn't know if I'd be there when they got back. We say all the things folks wish they had time to say to those they love. The children are in junior high and I believe a freshman in high school. Would I be on the material plane when they returned? Two decades of linear time later, I'm still feeling the side effects of the chemicals from the do-stents. Why, the tumor board told me they don't typically see it and yet they have a therapy in place for it. So there's a little hiding there. Water went unimpeded, runs to the lowest point. The chemicals in question are going to mix with water, are they not? Impeded water would be perhaps in a glass or some other container, behind a dam, in a water tank, or in a sprayer. That being said, the unimpeded chemicals are no longer controllable, are they? And where is the lowest point? River water? Groundwater? What about evaporation? Oh, that's rainwater. I have an idea. Let's fill a container with chemicals for hack-and-squirt, or round-up, or whatever this issue is about. We'll find a third party who knows neither one of us and we will all meet at your house. We'll let this stranger decide how much of these chemicals go into your favorite salad dressing, your dog's water dish, your bath water, your daughter's breast milk, your child's load of laundry. Let's see if the third party would like to put some in your barbecue for a little air pollution. I'll wrap it up. There's some more and I'd like to submit this. Okay, so what about my children and what about your children? Is it reasonable to even have this debate implying on some level that attempted murder is okay as long as we only solicit and do not pull the trigger ourselves? Where does compassion and empathy end? The truth is, it never does. Ma'am, you need to wrap it up. For those who are capable of expressing compassion and empathy, there is no end. Perhaps the choice is as simple as you find your compassion or I lose mine. Thank you. After all, on some level, I am you. Thank you. Edwin?
Madam Chair, Supervisors, people of Mendocino County, we're here today for one reason and one reason only. Because the Fisher family, owners of the Mendocino Redwood Company, The Gap, Banana Republic, Athleta, the Fairmont Hotel in San Francisco, Oakland A's, billionaires. Because they sanctioned their company's management, employees, and contractors using economic poisons and leaving millions of dead standing trees in the forests of Mendocino County each year. Why? Because it's cheaper. To quote Mike Janai, "Ideally, we will someday find a cost-efficient alternative to the application of herbicides to reduce tan oak density. Until that time, continued restoration activities will require some herbicide use." A million trees a year, 60,000 pounds over the last 15 years, and he says "some herbicide It matters not whether it is for profit or just to keep the doors open. It puts the Fisher family's interests before the lives, property, and well-being of us, their neighbors. I see an irony in describing them as poor neighbors for how they treat the neighborhood and all of us in it. In a past life, I was a real estate agent in Oakland selling junk property to investors. It's interesting really because the Fishers' legacy comes from buying junk hotels, fixing them up and trading up. More recently, they invested in cut-over forest lands here in Mendocino and in Humboldt County. A smart real estate investor analyzes the investment, creates a scenario for making the investment profitable, and knows that the money is made when you first buy the property. They bought it cheap. They knew what they were getting and chose to bet on it, invested capital and time, and now they're poised to buy more forest lands because they see a profit in it. They continue the practice of using economic poisons on the landscape, causing an extreme fire hazard to be more extreme, increasing the effects of climate change, endangering wildlife, like spotted owl, and human lives as well, residents and firefighters alike, to save money. There are other methods available. They have other choices. We're not taking the practice of cutting down trees from them. We're just saying, don't do it using poisons and leaving them standing. I want to say in closing that the spirit of the people of Mendocino is indomitable. And in this, the 25th year since Redwood Summer, our energy is focused. I say to the Fishers that you cannot win this without making a deal with us, the people of Mendocino County. You've painted yourselves into a corner, branding yourselves as green and charging a premium for that. Greenpeace has painted you as a poster child for what the Forest Stewardship Council allegedly does right. Our concerns will cause them to agree. It's just a matter of time and public opinion. Sir? Respect for Mother Earth, respect for all beings, respect for us, respect for our homes, and the practice.
Thank you, sir. Steve Drake?
I have lived in the redwood and fir-mixed forest with broadleaf denizens for 45 years or so. I've always thought the oak was a good resource. I thought, when I get old, I'd use it for firewood. And I hope there's still some there. Now, I have oak on my property and I don't go out and cut it to burn because I live right next to large timber operations. I've witnessed several cuttings over the years. And oak has always been used as a...something for the people that live there for me. I've been nicely graced with several cords brought to my property line as a courtesy and I would see trucks of this stuff going down the road. I figure it's...I mean, I still buy oak. It's worth 20 cents a board foot or something, maybe, less than redwood, less than fir, but still of value. And it really hurts me to think that this resource, this valuable, maybe not ultimately valuable, but still valuable, is just wasted. It reminds me of 18th-century buffalo harvesting. And it just bothers me. Supervisor Whit House, I appreciated your early comments and agree with you largely, but I didn't like you calling it a weed because in my forest, it doesn't burn like you suggest. I have a hard time getting it going unless it's dry. Now, maybe if it's oak inland that's been sunbaked, it would burn and be a threat. People seem to regard it that way, but...and I have a hard time believing that we need a scientific study to prove that a dead-standing tree is more flammable than a living tree. I want to cite the article in the magazine, but I don't know the exact issue. So, in closing, I support the resolution. It could be stronger, but I'm willing to give a neighbor a chance to measure up to what the people want. And I can't believe it's not more profitable to be in harmony with your neighbors than not.
Please address the Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to acknowledge that I consider this a collaboration rather than a hostile, anger-filled encounter. And I think this resolution would give the company at least a chance to be good neighbors and respect the resource and the people. And one last thing. As an economic issue, when you cut all the acorns, the squirrels go and they eat the tops of redwoods. I thought it was porcupines, but we don't have porcupines. The squirrels, I've seen them. Well, girdle, the redwoods and the tops all die now. I can't...I think there is a balance that can be reached, leaving some redwoods, I mean, leaving some oak for the squirrels and for the oak itself. And I'm going to stop now, but I'd like to at least mention medron and chinkapin that get bundled in. They both have the value that I appreciate and I don't like to see them disregarded.
Thank you. Ann, Bruna? Patrick Landergan? Landergan, Percy?
Landergan.
Oh, it's the fire chief.
Hi, Chairwoman, Board. Patrick Landergan, Fire Chief of the Piercey Volunteer Fire Department. Clearly, this is a long-term, probably as long as I've been alive, issue. And I'm pretty new to this, right? So, to me, the vehicle here is fire safety on an obvious issue of what anybody wants to call it. It's just not right to do this practice. And if you want to use fire safety as the vehicle, then fine. Because you can't tell me that fire safety, if a burning stand of hack-and-spray or frill treatment, whatever you want to call it, forest is on fire, that that fire safety issue does not pose a health hazard to the rest of the entire county. So I don't care what you want to call it, poisoning, fire safety, let's just call it what's doing right. And I'll tell you, my firefighters and me myself personally, I'm not a fire science scientist, what have you, but until I have a study by a third party for in my hand that says hack-and-spray intentional dead-standing fuels is less flammable or what have you than not, I can't believe that intentional dead-standing fuels can be less harmful than not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teri Hurney will follow.
Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Scherf. I live in Little River with my wife for nearly 40 years. We live on a private drive, Frog Pond Road. I've seen my neighbor's house burned down. It goes up fast. We tried to save it, but it was just impossible. There was not enough water nearby. So, you know, I'm very concerned about fire safety. There's only one ingress to our home. My wife is homebound, disabled, highly chemical-sensitive. I know the issue here is out of fire safety. We're not supposed to mention toxins, but we live here to get away from toxins. And we have a very bad neighbor who lives just uphill from our water supply, from our well. Our home is an original homestead. It's been standing for 130-plus years. My children live in this county. My grandchildren live in this county. I'm a taxpayer. I vote and I'm watching. I believe this resolution is really admirable, but it's not strong enough. It needs to have more teeth and I believe it should be, you know, taken to the next level. I am also to talk to my, you know, to this gentleman over here. My name's Jake Mike. I have worked...I'm in the corporate world. I've worked for multi-billion-dollar corporations. When I hear that, you know, this plan is just kind of going to upset our planning, you know, we can't really change it because we really have planning, I just call bull on that with a capital B because I, in my executive role in corporations, have been able to turn on a dime when there is a health and safety issue here. And that's what the deal is here. This is all about health and safety. So I implore to you to put more teeth into this. And, you know, again, we, the community, you can see there's a lot of people here very upset about this practice that's been continuing. We can't afford to have bad neighbors. We enjoy having good neighbors in our community and that's what we should embrace. So thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Teri Hurney?
I'm Teri Hurney.
You have three minutes. Restate your name so the clerk can get it, ma'am.
My name is Jenny Shattuck. I have two letters here and I'm going to condense them both down so they're really quick for you. I last was here a year ago, speaking about when we were addressing childhood cancer rates.
Thank you.
Ready? I was here a year ago, addressing childhood cancer rates, and I explained to you then that my...while I was pregnant, I woke in the middle of the night hearing dogs barking and thinking it was bears outside. I went outside and in fact, at like four in the morning, I found four men with spray packs attached to their back who had explained to me that they had been spraying the area for the past few months. And so I moved out that day. And they had also mentioned they had sprayed where my water was when I told them where my spring was. Months later, my son was born with leukemia and I was asked if I lived in Kettleman City, had visited the Chernobyl area, or lived near a nuclear waste dump. But I lived here, Mendocino County, at the very bottom of MRC's Rockport area. I backed up to it. But the fact was, is trespassers had come in and sprayed my water supply. So I have a lot I wanted to say, but I'm just going to skip to the part that says, "I am not against logging. My family's been here for six generations, five generations have been in the lumber business, but I want MRC to do what they do best, and that is log. Log these trees. Do something with them. Biochar, biomass, firewood, sell permits for people to go and get the firewood. Chip it, to return to the soil, something. There's a healthier alternative." And the other thing I want to hand you is this piece of paper, stack of paper, who...Pauline Hess, who was the neighbor of Hans Burkhardt, he gave her this. He was hired by MRC's Donald Fisher, who asked for a presentation stating that he would consider a plan that was sustainable, not toxic. So Hans Burkhardt came up with this plan right here for him and actually presented it to Donald Fisher, who instead chose to continue the practice of short-term forest management with heavy broadleaf herbicides, which leaves us with a lifeless Mars Dead Certification area. And I'm going to give you Pauline's letter and here's my letter and this lovely study. And I just want to say that us homeowners and people who live here, we pay just as much in taxes as these people who are destroying our area do, if not more. We pay fire taxes and we're asking for you...we elect you. We're asking you. I don't want more kids like my son. When I go visit UCSF, like 50% of the kids in the family Ronald McDonald House are children from Mendocino or Humboldt County where they also own lumber stands and do spray. I caught them spraying my water. They admitted to it to me. They offered me $50 to help find a bone marrow drive for my son during a bone marrow search. So those are the kind of people that I don't trust, but I am trusting you to do the right thing. Please, 17 years I've been waiting for this.
Mary Norbert Corte. Mary? Evidently not here.
Yes, why?
Then come forward, ma'am.
I am.
And up next would be Mike. 937-2254 is the phone number. I can't read your last name. Okay. Go forward, ma'am.
Good evening.
Restate your name.
My name is Mary Norbert Corte. I have lived in the Noya River Canyon for a number of years now. The first Board of Supervisors meeting I ever attended, the issue was the aerial spraying of herbicides, and that was in 1978. We've been working on the issue of poisons since then. And I would like to say that the number-one firewood crisis in the world documented by the United Nations is not high-quality sawlogs, is not 4x6 construction timber. It is firewood. Mendocino Redwood Products has the ability and the opportunity to let people in the local neighborhoods, in the local watersheds, go in and cull the oaks and the medrons, not the chinkapin, because chinkapin is sacred wood and the Indians don't like it disturbed. But the oak and medron can be called out and MRC can oversee that. And when you talk about the hidden cost of herbicides, you're talking about grave social unrest as a hidden cause of herbicides. And we need very much to pay attention to that. And if the chemical companies are going to use the general public on field tests of their products, then they must admit in an orderly manner with variables anecdotal evidence as to the consequences of that use. We have fungicide, herbicide, what else? Rodenticide. We have pesticides. We either make pests or pets. And I say that all these sides are going to lead to homicide as a species if we're not careful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir, for observing the rule. I appreciate it. Mike?
Yes, Mike Colton. Sir? I'm a member of Comanche Volunteer Fire Department and I'm here today because I'm concerned about firefighter safety and community safety, as well as the health impacts of Amazaper. I support your resolution. However, I don't feel that it's strong enough. I think we do need the studies, however, there already is that study. The Scanlon Study, excuse me, that you referenced earlier, was done in 2011, which wasn't too long ago. It was done by four fire scientists and it clearly, it was done over a long term. It studied early-stage and late-stage herbicides, up to 12 years out, and it undoubtedly called out herbicide as being the most fire hazard that there is, you know, an extreme...it was an extreme model for sudden oak death in the extreme. And that fire...it was actually a fire study. And it concluded that in herbicide-treated stands, that hand crews could not fight those fires. It was too intense. If we don't have...I'm concerned that if we have a big fire in our area, similar to the 2008 lightning strikes, fires, that if resources are elsewhere in the state, we can't fight those fires. If we don't have the air support, we can't get anywhere near there. So I feel that that study is already in place. I would encourage the board to read that study. Also, I would like to read this resolution from 1994. I think every word of it applies to today. This is Resolution Number 94-173, Resolution of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, requesting the California State Board of Forestry and/or other state agencies to protect Mendocino County forestlands and residences from the extreme high fire danger caused by the girdling and/or use of herbicides resulting in dead but not downed hardwoods. Whereas Mendocino County has approximately 1 million acres of commercial forestlands. And whereas thousands of acres have been treated and hardwoods have been killed and left standing, and whereas such standing but not downed dead hardwoods present an extreme fire danger which threatens the health and safety of thousands of rural and urban residents, and whereas there are no current regulations on the practice of girdling of hardwoods or the use of herbicides or any requirements that such trees, although killed, be downed to reduce fire danger. And whereas this forest management practice continues despite the protests of many residents who would be the most immediately affected by any resulting firestorm. And whereas the fire hazard and public health danger is compounded because thousands of acres bear not only dead hardwoods but also large amounts of dead brush, much of which has been treated with herbicides, including garland, the impacts of which, under fire conditions, have not been properly assessed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors is extremely concerned on behalf of the citizens of Mendocino County and the risk to the standing timberlands in the event of fire, and request that California State Board of Forestry and other appropriate state agencies too, call an immediate halt to any practice which leaves large acreage of killed hardwoods standing but not downed, and take immediate action to reduce the present and existing fire danger, and call an immediate halt to the use of herbicides, including garland, in this manner, and to assess the impacts of such use, and determine management practices which will not result in creating fire danger, public health hazards, or any toxically contaminated soils or vegetation. Consider the above concerns when issuing a timber management plan. I think every word of that applies today. It sounds like it was written yesterday. So is there a statute of limitations on...
Let's have order in this chamber. Please wrap up, sir.
Is there a statute of limitations on resolutions from the Board of Supervisors? Is this still in effect? Can you reaffirm this? And instead of request, you know, compel them somehow. One word changed and we're done.
Thank you. Ally Becker? B-O-E-C-K-E-R?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ally or Sue?
It's Ally. But hang on one moment, please. Supervisor McCowen?
You've all been very patient. We want to hear what all of you have to say. It is getting late. I think you would also like to have the opportunity to hear our discussion and whatever decision we're going to make tonight. We will get to that point, I think, quicker. If we do observe the rules that the Chair has cited, that we hear from the speakers, we listen to everyone with respect, we don't applaud or boo or whatever, we simply hear from the speakers, go on to the next speaker, and that will get us to the finish line quickest, I believe. So thank you all for your cooperation.
And thank you, Supervisor McCowen. Obviously, I irritated some people. Peter Good?
I'm...can I speak?
Oh, Ally, of course. I am so sorry.
Hi, my name's Ally Boker. It's the first time that I've showed up to one of the supervisors' meetings. Thank you all for sitting here because it's really interesting times that we're in. It's not an easy position to be in when what we're faced with is systemic change that needs to happen. For example, this resolution from 20 years ago, why has that not changed anything? At 20 years ago, I was eight years old. I wouldn't...I might have been under the desk or something. I agree with most of what's been said by many people, but I think what I want to use my time for is to request from you five to be brave enough to pass something with teeth, to pass something that matters. And Measure S just passed in Mendocino County, a community rights ordinance that gives rights to local people, gives rights to the ecosystem. Because whether we're talking about a timber harvest plan and poisoning of our forests or fire danger or water extraction or water poisoning, all of which are true in this case, it comes down to who has the right to decide the practices that affect the local people? Who gets to decide if tan oaks of food for people and wildlife are eradicated by toxins? Who knows how far the poison will spread when they catch on fire? And I'm trembling a little right now because what... And I'm trembling a little right now because what I want to say is that I'm 28, facing a world that doesn't look like we're going to have life on earth very long. So, what I want to say to the five of you who are in a position of authority, where you can actually pass something, is to not only adopt the resolution, but create it into an ordinance, and then take it a step further. Has this be the fir, this is the first step of many. Consider writing something that is empowering local people, really giving Mendocino County an opportunity to make a difference. Because if we don't start rethinking the way we make our laws, we're just going to find ourselves with another resolution 20 years later, but maybe a lot less life. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Good, please, followed by Els Coopan Rider.
Uh, Peter Good. Um, I've lived in Mendocino County since 1974. Uh, I think this is a simple issue. Uh, the two largest private landowners in Mendocino County have, uh, created a situation through the use of herbicides where 1 million dead standing trees are in the middle of the forest. And what you've just heard them say is that they don't think that that's a fire hazard. That's what they said. They don't think it's a fire hazard. They have a big business that, um, uh, is dependent on them using these economic poisons. They're about to make a huge investment in their sawmills. But, so you have to figure out, do you believe Mendocino Redwood Company's assertion that a million standing dead trees in the forest does not create a fire hazard? If you believe that, fine. Go ahead and don't vote to do anything. Just let it go forever. But, so you have to figure that out. You have to research it. You have to, you should have already read the Scanlon Report. This is a huge thing in the middle of the county. It doesn't only affect the people around them, obviously the most. The, you have letters from the Albion Fire Chief. They, the first thing that he says in his letter is, "Look, our people can't get out. They might lose their life in this." Okay? Then you have all of the dangers of the smoke. This is a straight-up, uh, health hazard, like Barry Vogel said. This is a health and safety issue that has been created by a private property owner, and it's endangering other people's lives. You have the power and the responsibility to change this. And you should, and it will not go away. And it's on your shoulders to do it. It really is. If you, if you come up with something that doesn't work, nobody's going to buy it. It's not going to go away. So, um, um, this is very simple. Put something in with teeth and do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Um, Els Coopan Rider, followed by D.M. Doorman.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Els.
I'm going to cut short what I wrote because so much of it has been covered.
Can you get the mic for her?
That's better? Thank you. Uh, I'm cutting short because so much of it has been very thoroughly covered this evening. Uh, but I do want to point out that the forest, MRC's forest management program is a monocropping policy. And this is a crime against all of nature. Our migratory birds that go all the way from Alaska, stop over here, some of them, and go all the way to Central and South America are already at risk. So are lovely monarch butterflies. And what kind of a habitat does a poisoned forest offer for all wild creatures? If Mendocino Redwoods cares about these forestlands, as they claim, they would use their enormous wealth to abide by a drought-duration moratorium on logging. MRC can use its wealth to demand and to achieve government funding for a massive replanting of our devastated forests, providing employment for loggers, jailed young people, and prisoners. I think we need a new definition of crime. We have, I don't know how many young people in prisons and jails for marijuana, and, and yet you can destroy massive areas of forest and all its life, and that is not considered a crime? Who should be imprisoned? Who provides the most, the greatest threat to our planet? Uh, and for an interim period, MRC, Fisher, Gap, billionaires can afford to pay their employees until they can achieve government funding to work on the forests. Fire, fire season has already begun. Uh, this year, there have been more spot fires in Mendocino County than in the history of fire suppression in this county. This afternoon, coming down Radical Ridge, looking over Redwood Valley, thunderheads were already building up in the east with the possibility of lightning strikes. Our county has been plagued by arsonists, some caught, others not. Every year, fires have been set along Highway 101 between Willets and Ukiah. What do I got here? There is a remedy for MRC, Gap, and Fisher's creation of a massive health and fire danger. These forest owners should be required to pay the entire cost of fire suppression, not the citizens. This accountability needs to become law. Remember the Romans of the infamous empire? They poisoned themselves to death, or did they treat themselves to death? Thank you.
Sue Boker, B-O-E-C-K-E-R, not Ally, Sue.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us, for listening to all of this all afternoon. I have to agree, I think that the resolution needs a tooth or two. I would hope that you would direct your, your county staff to gather the European studies on Amazaper and the other chemicals that they're using in, in the forest. Nobody knows what happens. If, when that gets into the dirt, when it gets into the air, I too am a cancer survivor, and it's, it's unconscionable that we're being exposed to more of these kinds of chemicals. Thank you for bringing forward the resolution. I think it should be an ordinance, and I think it should have teeth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark. I cannot read your last name, but your phone number is Deff, and you're representing bees.
My name is Mark Loslow. The Amazaper label has a long list of plants it is used to kill. And having kept bees in South Carolina and studied on them and their forage, I recognized about one-third were bee plants that bees take nectar and pollen from. They depend on these plants to have a productive year and to make it through the year, even to get started. For instance, when I lived in South Carolina, my bees made sourwood honey, which is the food of the gods. And the sourwood is no good for lumber, it's good for firewood. There was so much sourwood, they brought this pink amber nectar back and made it into honeycomb that you wouldn't believe how delicious it tasted and how wholesome it was in the comb. And the red maple also, they took pollen from to get started. And there and here, dandelion is one plant that helps bees get started in most places so that they can have a productive year. If the manufacturers of herbicides intentionally set out to make war on bees and nature, they could not do more to kill them. And they are knocking out rungs of the food chain that our lives, human lives, depend on. I think that agricultural chemicals should not be used in Mendocino County except in rare-spot treatments because the agricultural chemicals with the massive over-applications of them, tens and millions of pounds per year used, it's making war on the life of the planet. And the planet doesn't have many lives. It's like saying that, well, we have so many thousands of trees here. We have a forest. It's a forest, and we're attacking the forest, we're attacking life on the planet. We have to use other means to control weeds and pests and not these horrible chemicals which are threatening human existence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, right, it's back to the board. I have no more speaker cards. Supervisors?
Um, where are we? Have we got a motion in a second?
We're tired. That's where we are.
Well, I know, but did we?
No motion, no.
Oh, well, Madam Chair, I think I can move this along by moving the resolution.
I'll, I'll send it down.
Oh, we already did this. Four hours ago, didn't we? Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think we did.
Okay.
That was on something else.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, um, you know, this is my resolution. I brought it to the board. You know, as the board is well aware, um, it borrows heavily from a resolution that was passed unanimously by the board in 1994. Um, I have heard a lot of criticism today, all of which I took to heed about how weak the resolution is, how people want an ordinance, and they want teeth, and they want a lot of things. What I see this as is, is just a step. If this resolution were to pass, the first step would be to determine whether timber operators in the county are willing to, to do this. Are they willing to voluntarily abide for the sake of, of the goodwill of the community and the community moving forward? If, excuse me, excuse me, it's my turn. If indeed they agree to do that, I think we would move very quickly forward with whatever process the board would approve. And that would have to be brought back to the board. Now, I would see a process where we enter into partnerships, particularly with the fire safe councils and probably with the, the fire districts. And we may need to do a, an RFP, a request for proposals, so we can determine which of the fire ecology companies that exist, we've identified some of them, but there are probably more. So this process would have to move pretty quickly, I realize, but I don't think that it's impossible to achieve it in, in the period that's prescribed here, which is, is six months. People have cast a lot of doubt about whether the mean old corporations are willing to, to voluntarily abide by this ordinance. I don't know if they will or not. They may, um, out of self-interest or out of, out of just their realization that they need to live here with us, just like we seem to need to live here with them. So that would be something that is yet to be determined. However, um, I can say that if the majority of this board were to favor this resolution and the timber company said, "We're not going to abide by it," uh, the board may then want to take some other step. It doesn't mean that it's the last of the process. And I, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to threaten, I'm just saying, if the board says, as they said in 94, and as they would say again in, in, in 2015, that they really question this process and question it enough that they feel, uh, that it really needs, needs at least a good analysis of the increased fire risk due to this practice, um, then the board, I think, would, it would behoove the board to take some additional step. But I don't know exactly what that would be. But I would say it, it would perhaps not be something that was voluntary. It might be something where the board actually tried to put something in place with more teeth. But I don't want to go there. Um, I want to, I want to be part of a community. Um, a lot of people have spoken really eloquently to that. I think it's the best way to go. I don't know if it'll work, but it's the method that, that I've chosen, in, not myself, but in conjunction with a lot of people in my district. So for those of you who are dissatisfied with this step, um, uh, please realize that it's only a step. And with that, I, I'm sure we're going to have some discussion, but, um, I would like to see the board move forward with this and, and, and launch this analysis and basically move forward from there.
Okay, um, to the motion, Supervisor Jordy.
So, I would just like to add that, um, to the comments I made earlier in the meeting, which is, I, I think we need to look ahead to those additional steps and, and be thinking about who might serve on an advisory committee to draft up potential ordinance for the board. There isn't an ordinance on our agenda today, so there's, it's not like we can just retitle it ordinance, so that's just not a possibility. But we can pass the resolution today, and we can continue to meet with members of the public, um, fire departments, et cetera, and, and think of who would be good to serve on an advisory committee to work with, perhaps an ad hoc committee of the Board of Supervisors, perhaps Supervisor Hamburg, and perhaps Supervisor Woodhouse, who are already sort of on this issue. And, and then have, because it's going to take time to develop an ordinance. It could take many public meetings. And, but in the meantime, we would have, um, due to this resolution, we would have the action going forward to get the data to show to what extent, if this is a fire hazard, which it certainly appears to be, um, to what extent it is, and what, as Chief Will, um, Ted has said so eloquently, that there may, you know, we may have recommendations for what would be the buffer between adjacent property owners. That's something we don't have at this point, but we could certainly get in the next month or two.
Supervisor Woodhouse.
Sure. I wanted to say thank you Supervisor Hamburg for bringing this forward. I have a couple of things to say about it. We do have a serious fire hazard throughout our county, and it's not just on MRC properties. If they were doing nothing, we still have a big problem. So we need to keep looking at the bigger picture as well. And herbicides are not a long-term solution and not an acceptable practice to me. It's poisoning us, and it's just not a smart thing to do. But I clearly feel that this is a good motion for bringing forward this talking points that we've had, but it's not in a form that I can support because I don't see the clarity of the timelines and the ability to respond, and I know how long it takes government to act. But I'm just one of five, and I appreciate the input, and I think talking about this is the first step. So thank you all very much.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to again acknowledge the patience of everyone in sitting through what's been a very long afternoon. We've heard a lot of comment. And at the end of it, you know, I think we, we are still in a position where we don't have the answers to some of the key questions. Like, to me, you know, I've said it today, I said it three years ago, thank you to Mike Calentarian for providing me the commentary between myself and the then-chief forester for MRC. So, just intuitively, you're going out, you're killing a lot of trees, you're increasing the fire hazard. You know, that's just, seems kind of obvious to me. And yet, as I also said earlier today, conditions vary across the landscape, you know, based on, you know, microclimates, stand density, uh, you know, moisture that's, you know, in, in that particular, you know, goal- that particular, you know, gulch or canyon. And it also varies on proximity of residential dwellings. So, you can have conditions where you're increasing fuel loading, and you're creating the potential intensity and severity of any particular burn. And yet, are you increasing the public health and safety to identifiable individuals? Maybe not. You know, my experience with, with MRC, and I know opinions vary, I actually think they have presented an improved commitment to long-term forest values instead of cut-and-run. You know, Judy Berry called it very correctly many years ago. She identified that the industrial timberland owners of the time were practicing cut-and-run forestry. They were getting every dollar out that they could. They cut stands down well below anything that could be called sustainable, at the same time they were paying their lawyers to argue in court that it was sustainable. Well, we all know that it wasn't. And the tan oak dominance in areas that historically had been conifer-dominated was one result of that. And, you know, I want to comment to one thing. The practice of, of treating tan oak, whether they do it manual release, chemical release, any other method, is not part of a short-term profit motive by any company that uses that practice, because it will bear no economic return to them for 40, 50 years, or longer. So it's part of a long-range effort to convert tan oak-dominated stands back to what they say is closer to the historic balance. So, everything else aside, it's not based on a short-term return. If they only wanted that, they wouldn't bother to treat tan oak at all. I find myself in the curious position of supporting everything that my colleague said in support of the resolution without being able to support the resolution. When Mike Genai spoke, he spoke, I thought sincerely, to having a, a community-wide effort to get more facts on the table, get the information, so that we really know what's going on. And I believe that in that interim period, rather than trying to require them to not use this practice anywhere, I honestly believe that they're very open to not using the practice anywhere there's a credible possibility that it would increase fire hazard to their neighbors. So, you know, I support doing the study, I support getting the information, but, and getting the answers that I don't think we have today. Unfortunately, I do not support the resolution in its present form.
You know, please, this has been a long, you know, I, I think that just guides me where I'm going to go with my vote. I would like to tell Supervisor Hamburg, you know, I appreciate bringing, he bringing forth concerns of constituents, but I'm going to be siding with Supervisor Woodhouse and McCowen for all the reasons stated. Supervisors, we're going to vote by the button. Okay. The motion is to pass the resolution. It was made by Supervisor Hamburg and seconded by Supervisor Jurdie.
Motion, motion fails with Supervisor Brown, McCowen, and Woodhouse dissenting.
Supervisor. We just need to have order, Supervisor? Okay. Okay. Vote's over. We're going, Supervisor McCowen?
Well, Madam Chair, I think we could still consider what other direction we may wish to give, if any.
Or can we come back that, with that, at the time we have the agenda item on fire hazards? You know, fire safety.
My feeling is that it's kind of, kind of late to be thinking very creatively. You know, I think we can come back with an agenda item, though, in the near future. Try to figure out how we go forward.
Does that work for everyone? Okay. Okay.
Do you want to defer Supervisor reports?
No, let's just adjourn and go home. I'm calling the 5:30.
Well, as chair, you could simply defer the reports, and we can go home.
Okay. We're adjourning the meeting. It is 6:37.